Please go ahead and play it.
I play with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the wrong.
Ms. Clark Filter here. Ms. Nywer.
Here.
Ms. Fabrega.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Here.
Colonel P.
Mr. Heim, do we have?
Well, we have, first of all, we have our Eisenhower Middle School principal here. So, Kevin, if you'd like to throw up Callan Glasgow. Is that right for the presenting?
Right.
Okay, good.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Those of you who don't know me, I'm Callan Glasgow, the head principal of Eisenhower Middle School. This is my first year coming into the principal role at Long Public Schools. The past four years as a principal, I've represented in school and in Adarko. We really wanted to focus this school year on coming in, changing the culture and climate. Teachers want to feel supported. Students want to feel supported. How do you do both of those? Me and my team really created a family-oriented environment. The teachers have a voice as well as the students. We created some structure for the students. Students love structure, believe it or not. They want to know that they're structured. They feel safe when they're structured. They feel protected. They want people that they can come to. They feel very welcome to come to us. We get along. We have a great time. When it's business, it's business. But they know, hey, we work hard and do certain things, then we get to go have a little fun. We did a student-faculty game before spring break. They absolutely loved it. Everybody had a great, great time. So, we really, really changed the culture and climate of the place. So, we've got a long ways to go. We can always do better. But our students absolutely love being there. Our teachers absolutely love being there. We have one transfer request going into next year, and nobody else wants to leave. So, I think that speaks volumes of the screen. It really does. With that being said, we've got a really good broadcasting team there. Our students, they created a video that I want to show y'all. So, we're going to do that now. After we're done, if there's any questions y'all want to ask, feel free to do so, okay? That's our kiddos. Like I said, we've had a phenomenal year so far. And we're looking to close it out in very positive note. The teachers and everyone's gearing up for state testing, so. Any questions that y'all have?
One question.
Go ahead.
Big shout out to you and your staff, because one of the things that sometimes we see it as a community when it's slow, but people don't see how rapid it happens. We talked about it when we redistrict our board, and that our far west board member had 10,000 more. It's got to stay within 1%. That far west member had 10,000 more registered voters than the far east. When 10 years ago, they were equals. So, everybody's moved to the west. That's our big growth area in Long. And obviously, Eisenhower Middle School probably has as many students as they've ever had in the history of Eisenhower Middle School. And even the high school, that's where our growth is right there. And to continue to add the programs and create those opportunities for kids, big shout out to you and your staff, because we see some great things from Eisenhower Middle School this year.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I have eighth grader nephew over there that his mom married in Darkville just a couple of years ago. And I asked him, well, how do you like your new principal? And he said, he's a really good guy.
We get along with all the kids. They punch us all day long. So, it's a fun place. We all love going to work.
He loves it.
Shout out to Mr. Glasgow, because every time I go over there, he's nowhere near his office. Seriously, he's always out in the hall. He's always hanging out with kids. He's always in classrooms. Been an instructional leader. He's done a really good job.
Well, I could hear a kid say that he talks to the principal all the time. Because Marcus, I mean, I don't know what his last name is, unfortunately, but he's a family. But he, to just say that he talks to, he brings his ideas to him. He talks to. And I'm like, wow, how often did you ever say that about the principal? When I was in school, you know, no, there was a different scenario. Admissible to you.
Thank you. We've got an amazing team.
I really liked what you said about the structure. As a previous educator, I'm a believer in structure and the adults being in charge. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
No, but if you could.
All right, y'all. We appreciate it. Thank you.
We have Goal Area Two. If you remember, we completed this strategic plan. A lot of people in this room, a lot of people that are very active in our school, community members, were part of the strategic plan. The one thing we guaranteed you when we did it is it would not go to a shelf and not be looked at. So, we will, almost at every, monthly and a quarterly, we'll have somebody present an update on the goal area. This is Goal Area Two. Our, we kind of have a shoemaker leader just to make sure it's all getting ran. And then she has committees of people outside, and they always bring in somebody else hopefully to speak. So, we got Scott Smith. Big shout out to our teacher there. We all know he said he won the state. Somebody very devoted. Now, there were 12 great candidates, and I promise ours was, I had numerous people tell me, our candidate was as good as any candidate on the stage. And I have no doubt, we all know Scott Smith's a superstar teacher. So, big shout out to him while we're going. Sorry for letting you steal your thunder.
Nope. I'm gonna keep it to him anyways, because I'm his co-chair, and he sat in on the planning meeting. And this is his committee, subcommittee. So, I'm gonna let him start it, and then I'll fill in the gaps. But we do have Goal Area Two, and that's with culture and climate. And I did not make the power go out before the meeting.
So, of course, I'm Scott Smith, and Lynn is my handler, because I'm a talker. So, she's gonna make sure I don't overdo it.
She doesn't. I do have 16%.
Okay. So, one of the things that I'm really so excited about this was that I was paired with the culture and climate portion of it, because I think that plays in my strength. I really believe in a positive building, and I love, 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 love. Here with our principal had said about students feeling safe but wanting to have that structure. Totally agree with that. So, Goal Area Two is culture and climate, and our first objective is to improve student behavior. Because, of course, that is the goal, is to get our students to learn in the less time that they are engaged in education, the less that they are learning. So, we're gonna try to find ways to improve student behavior. And so, we started looking at some student support programs.
And before we go into that, I just want to, we put on here our subcommittee members. And then we have Laura Pacino, Dr. Pacino, Ms. Vanessa Perez, Felicia Stanley, who's already in education. And then Ms. Sibley, who is also in the audience. We have a few of our subcommittee members. But we sat, and these are some of our identified areas for Initiative One in regards to making sure that we are supporting the student programs that are already in place or that we are likely to implement.
So, as we're in the process of developing our plan, some of the things that come up are communication. And we've got a really strange problem to deal with. And it's too much communication and not enough communication at the same time. And so, we're trying to solve that problem so that everybody's on the same page, and they still get to keep those avenues to share their information. But it's just a little more streamlined and less confusing for them. So, we're developing goals, those goals and objectives to enhance the community objectives. We're still in the very early stage of this, of this '22, '23. This is a five-year plan. And so, right now, we're assessing where we stand as Long Public Schools. So, we're researching character education programs. The reason I bring that up right now is, one of the things that was really exciting about this program was as we're looking, Long Public Schools is already doing a lot of things right. And so, that's a good, good place to start. It's nice to know you're doing some things that are going well. So, we've looked at education in life, which I know we have currently used Great Expectations and Character.org. I love students who come through my classroom who've been through Great Expectations. I can always tell by what your kids, it seems like, which is really cool. And then Character.org, Charlotte Oaks pushed a lot of that when we were at Long High School together. And I love it. I totally believe in that. There's the number three, recommend and implement with fidelity, character education in all school sites based on development and demographic needs of students. And we really do want to push that, because it's really wonderful to see change in our district. And I've been here almost 20 years. And I remember times when students would drop a paper, and kids would either intentionally walk on those papers or ignore it. And it's not like that anymore. Students are helping one another. So, we already see that these character programs are starting to help. And then four, provide professional development on diversity, equity, and inclusion. An inclusion curriculum, and then climate and culture building for diversity. We are a military town, and we are serving a very diverse population. And it would behoove us to acknowledge that diversity and to celebrate it.
And in regards to that one, as we go to the next one, we already have DEI committee and director that's in charge of taking care of that. So, the PD just continues as we move on through our strategic plan. For the next few that we have, we have tutoring and mentorship programs. And we are doing a lot of the things that the planning committee required or asked of us. So, it's now sharing back out to them and to our partners what we're doing. And I think that's really where our gap has been, is communicating out again through the multiple platforms that we have, what it is we're doing. And then the research of the tutoring programs, that's ongoing, because we have a lot of partners that are trying to come in and help support that initiative. And it's trying to make sure we're giving the students the best means for their educational experience that's gonna reach them in their ways. So, the last part of Initiative One, for Objective One, is focused on those mentoring and tutoring programs. And you guys will obviously have access to, oh, I'll go back, to the PowerPoint to see the fine details.
And I just wanted to say to you guys that when you look on this, you'll see a lot of these we're not addressing, because this is '24, '25. With this being a five-year process, each year we'll have a different benchmark for us to use.
Okay. And then for our Objective Two, that's increase parental involvement. And for this subcommittee, we brought in our parent-teacher organizations and associations. Ms. Pam is here with us. And then we have a parent community member who's also tied to the military. We have an elementary principal, our Duna students, Ms. Dana Ross, who's over on Project Aware. And then both of us on there. So, that's the committee, the subcommittee. And for this one, this initiative, Family Caretaker Communication and Volunteer Program, what we found after meeting with our subcommittee for the action steps is that they just don't know how to come on campus and be a part. They want to participate. They want to help. But who do they contact? Who do they go to? Where are there organizations that they can be a part of? Because we have different ones at each site. And each grade level is different. Elementary volunteer programs are different from middle school and high school. You won't find as many parent volunteers in a high school classroom as you would in an elementary classroom. So, finding those in here and communicating out where they can go to to participate and be engaged. We found that parent engagement nights and open house and things of that nature is a great way to bring families in. And then recruit them there. Don't wait for when we need them, but to actually bring them in when they're, when they have to come. Parent-teacher conferences, all of that, and have other volunteers present that night to explain. So, they're not hearing it from staff members or teachers, but from the parents who are giving up their time as well.
Something else that we discussed, and something that we implemented in our program back when it was at Long High School, we tried to incorporate activities where the students could teach what they've learned to their parents. And we, one night it was called Paint Night with Parents, Presets, and Principals. And it was really pupils. It was really cool, because the pupils were the, I know it's a lot to say, right? But we had all of these adults in the room that were actually loving one another. It was nice to see a parent and a principal sitting each other in, instead of criticizing or trying to repair relationships intentionally. It just kind of happened naturally, because it removed that obstacle of feeling like you had to have your defenses up. So, the kids were helping the parents paint, the principals paint, and it was really fun. And so many parents said to me, I really like this. At high school, at elementary school, I was involved all the time. But when we start to get to middle school or high school, parents don't really know what to do. They don't know what that looks like. And honestly, as a teacher, we don't always know what that looks like at the high school level. So, I think this program's gonna be a great way for us to get parents in in a positive way. Up here, there was a, there was some mention about calling parents and making a positive comment before we ever even get to parent-teacher meetings. And I'm gonna tell you, I've been a big proponent of that the whole time I've been at Long Public Schools. And Charlotte Oaks made that LRC requirement. She's like, you guys, get on that phone and make some positive comments. I'm going to tell you, it shocked so many parents when they hear something dies. And that freaks me out, because I see nice things out of these kids all the time. So, I think this is gonna be really beneficial to our middle school, and especially the high schoolers. We've got to get the parents into our high school classroom.
And I think we're doing that with one thing that we just implemented this school year, which is rooms. And rooms is another way, it's similar to group meeting. And the one complaint we had was that we had too many platforms to communicate with parents. You have one kid, four different platforms to talk. So, rooms is going to help with that. We've been training, we actually were in the car the whole day. The staff was out there. So, just trying to get them to plug into that and send a quick text, hey, your student did amazing today. Just let them know, thanks for all they did. Something that simple. And then with Ms. Sibley here, applause you. We are back in. After COVID, they kind of stepped away, but they're back now, and they are helpful and one of the volunteer, even just removing furniture. So, we're doing that. And we're gonna make this quick, because I just got the low power. Icon, so we gotta talk fast. So, we'll go on to our last one, which is really our Objective Three. And the most important part, I think, is where I felt Scott and I were on this, because that is my team's for the comment card, right? We manage that, and that's receiving input from our community and how we can change or help or assist or even celebrate what's going on in our district. So, you'll see Mike Kebo, who's a community member on here. And we're going to add, as we move through this plan, more people will come to the table and help us make action for this. And so, for that, I'll let Scott tell you what we have done from our last planning.
So, for our last planning meeting, a lot of what we did was just assess what it is we have that's working. What is working, and how can we improve it? And start to look for where are our deficits? What is it that we're missing, and how do we plug those in? And Mike Kebo is pastor in our community, and he knows a lot of people, and he's got a lot of connections. So, we're gonna really rely on him to help us make some further connections, strengthen those connections into the community. And then this is two, we're gonna develop goals, objectives to enhance community connections. It might include, but not limited to, scheduled meeting times, dissemination of meeting outcomes, volunteer recruitment. Volunteer recruitment, we've got to really get that. Looking for mentors, funding partners, sponsorships and funding internships, recognition programs. Students love to be recognized. We had that at Long High School as well. A kid lost something, helped another kid out, and got recognized. He didn't want to be recognized in front of the classroom. And as soon as everybody left, he's like, I'm so glad you recognized me. It's like, I'm so glad we did too. And then, of course, data collection and analysis, because we have to have the proof and want to show that this is working.
And that is really all we have for our update. Do we have any questions regarding Goal Area Two?
I don't have a question, but this has been my soapbox for 40 years. So, I am so excited, and this is awesome.
I agree.
Thank you so much.
I mean, you said that is all, and I'm thinking, that's a lot, you know? So, I can't think of enough from heading this up and getting these programs and things going.
Isn't it exciting, though, that this is two, we've got two more goal areas?
Yes.
It continues, okay?
Well, I was thinking, I'm thinking of my friend kids in school here, and what friends are gonna be in in this five years, you know? And I will have two sixth graders, a seventh grader, and eighth grader. And it's just like all of this is just going to be so beneficial.
And if you continually, we do it right, and we get to the end of this in year four, and we get toward the end, and we start looking at redoing the strategic plan, the number of people who, because people will participate and help. If they know what, people just don't like to put a bunch, a lot of time in, and then you put it on a shelf.
Yeah. Well, I've been very appreciative and thrilled that it's actually coming, getting live, because I've been to a part of many strategic plans, as he said, they go up on the shelf when you're done, and you never hear about it.
Ms. Cam actually said that when she was hiring me, because she's a part of it. She was like, thank you for doing this.
I would like to just thank you guys and tell you how much I appreciate the fact that, Mr. Heim, you're letting us do this and not micromanaging it. I really appreciate that.
Well, I can put my plan out every day. But there's a lot more people that work, you know, it's kind of like I tell kids, and Lynn will tell you this, I tell it all the time. I'm 58. It's your school. I always talk about creating opportunities, but when I talk to high school kids, I've said, what are the opportunities you want me to create? Because what I see as an opportunity, I'm sorry, but it's not an opportunity to Lynn's daughter.
I realize I'm a reflection on LPS, but you know, LPS is a reflection on me too. And so, I want our district to be the best.
You will.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So, continuing on with my part, with the shout outs. The first one, and Lynn's gonna stay and help with these. But the first one I have is, and I'm gonna brag on Mr. Kirshen. And all of our principals do this, but when we started the LRC and we created that concept, one of the things that happened really fast was everybody talked about the LRC and how great the LRC is and all the great things. So, I went to the high school principals' meeting, and I said, wait a minute. How many of you have asked for something that Teresa said no? And it's just silence. I said, why aren't you creating things? Your goal should be able to create opportunities in your building that you may someday lose to the LRC, but you've created something in your building that we can talk about. So, Mr. Kirshen took it serious, and he created an aviation program. And we had, people saw it, it was in the paper today, I believe, and it was also on Channel Seven. But over spring break, we had eight students, I believe. And then we had like five more this weekend that actually flew for the first time and got their wings. And hopefully, I've, we've heard reports of different people out there that want to help pay for some of the private lessons and provide grants for the students, so we can actually have high school students graduate with their pilot class.
The classroom is a lot of fun to go see.
So, since we're putting that shout out to Mr. Kirshen, I'm going to say this, okay? When LRC was first introduced, there was not an art element initially. And I was a little offended. I said, where's the A in this theme? And Mr. Kirshen said, you know what? It's at the ground up. He goes, it can be whatever you want. You can write about it, or you could ask. And I wrote a letter to you that night.
About man's theme instead of.
About the art scene, bringing art, and you see the program. So, thank you, guys. I appreciate this.
And that's what we hope, again, that's the purpose of the LRC, is to create opportunities. You know, we talk about it all the time. But Lynn, what else have we got?
Okay. And then to add, we have a Oklahoma State Poetry Out Loud winner is from our district, and that's Adeline Anderson. And I hope to have her here so she can recite those to you. She has several honors in this past week, that you're probably gonna hear her name a few more times as long as, as well as Ayesha Kada from Eisenhower High School. So, she won the Oklahoma Law Day. And then because we're short on time, and we can talk here, and I can celebrate so many, this is gonna be a shameless plug for everybody that's listening and watching, for you to go and look at the LPS review, because if you really want to find out what's going on in there. And thanks to Dr. James, we're going to print 500 copies of this and distribute it out to the community. So, if anybody wants an LPS review to find out the good news that's going on in our district, let us know.
People from our transition program to our first-class program to LPS review, to what we're doing at the LRC, to our maker spaces, to our TAP programs, the number of the things the people in this district do that other people are coming and calling and wanting to see and trying to figure out how to copy it for their students is amazing. And it's just such a big shout out. I mean, I went to, I got to go to OIE, the Oklahoma Youth Expo over spring break. Dr. James and I went, and Stephanie went with us. It was so great.
We got an award as well, Chairman's Award. Congratulations.
Thank you. But the idea was, I got to see our students there, and just how many of them they are, and how excited and how great we're doing. So, again, we've got so many things going on. It's awesome.
Well, also, something on another program is Gateway. I have a coworker who had a child that's been doing virtual and actually was just not thriving in it, but didn't want to be back in the public schools. And so, I've kind of mentioned Gateway. So, she has now been in Gateway for three weeks, absolutely loves it. Has been by her vision board going. She's, I mean, she is thriving.
Again, we have virtual, we have Gateway, we have our three high schools, we have LRC, we have concurrent. Again, we look to create those opportunities. And hopefully, we continue to add opportunities for our students.
Do you have anything else under your report?
Nope. Number six.
Okay, let's look at the consent agenda. Does anybody want anything removed from that?
Move for approval.
Second.
All the wrong.
Ms. Clark Filter.
Yes.
Ms. Nywer.
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any need for an executive session?
No, ma'am.
Yeah, we have the superintendent's report.
Personnel report?
Already done that personnel report.
Personnel, sorry. Personnel report. I'll move for approval. Come on, guys.
One second.
Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley. Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Fabrega.
Yes.
Ms. Nywer.
Yes.
Ms. Clockfilter.
Yes.
We did, the next meeting is April 6th here at 5:15. And the meeting after that, we move into, we move to April 17th. And it, that's a Monday, but it'll be at the same time, 5:15 here at Shoemaker. So April 17th, we already have it in the.
Because then the annual, our District 11 is that.
Oh, okay.
20th is, yes.
She'll be, she'll be letting you know because she's got to register everybody.
Anything else? Okay, we will adjourn.